For today?
Oh, yeah.
Got it. Got it, got it, got it. If someone does, do you think it's this now? Because it would be money.
Yes, yes.
And staffing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I think that's fair. Are you feeling good?
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Bath Charter Township Board of Trustees Meeting. Let's start with a roll call.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here, Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rosegrans?
Here.
Thank you.
I'd ask that my fellow board members make sure your microphones are on before we get going here. We're going to start with item two. For those in the audience who don't have an agenda, there should be extras on the lectern for you to follow along. Lectern feels very close tonight.
It is.
Let's start with civic reflection. Two A, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now a moment of silence. Thank you. First item of business today is to form our agenda. Approval of the agenda number three. I did not hear from anyone on additions to the agenda. Do we have any additions your way? No, all right. None from anybody. Okay, I guess we will approve it as it stands then. So want to make a motion for that?
Make that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. How about disclosures of conflict of interest tonight from any board members? Doesn't look like it, so we'll move on. That brings us to public statement one. This is limited to three minutes designated for statements concerning the current agenda items. There will be a second opportunity for public statement at the end of the meeting where folks will have an additional three minutes to state anything that they would like about any topic they would like. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak to the board today? All right, I hear none, so we will move on. Items from county, state, federal, and other agencies. I don't see any of those folks here. Were we expecting anyone? All right. Cooking really fast here. That brings us to the consent agenda. There's two items in the consent agenda. Minutes from the Housing Commission and minutes from the Senior Services Advisory Board. How would you all like to proceed on consent agenda tonight?
I do have a question on the consent agenda. The Housing Commission submitted a special meeting minutes for June fourth of two thousand twenty-four, but we, the last time we received minutes from them was August sixteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
So we're missing minutes? All right.
Is there a reason? Does anybody know why we're not getting the minutes?
Are they having meetings? Have any been canceled?
It's not my understanding that any have been canceled. I believe that our deputy superintendent has reached out and inquired as to why we're not receiving minutes. I can have her follow up and do that again if that's satisfactory to the board.
Maybe she needs to reach out to all the board members as well.
Okay. We can do that.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get some help on some answers.
Okay.
All right, so looking for a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept them as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Since it's a consent agenda, we do not hold discussion. All those in favor of the consent agenda as provided, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda stands. That brings us to the approval of minutes. We've got one set of minutes from October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. How would you all like to move forward with those?
I, um, make a motion to accept them as submitted. All three of them.
There's actually three.
There's three from August, from October twenty-first. There's actually.
Oh, multiple sets?
Yes.
Oh.
Because we have the special meeting and, yeah.
Special, regular, and what's the third?
We had the budget and then we had a special meeting.
We had closed session.
Closed session in the middle.
Oh, closed session, got it. Thank you for that clarification. Actually, three sets.
Yep.
Someone make a motion, I'm sorry.
Yes, I made the motion.
Thank you. Did someone second that motion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Great. Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion on those three sets of minutes? All right, we'll take a voice vote on these as well. All those in favor of supporting, accepting the minutes of the Board of Trustees meetings, three of them from October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us to item nine, which is the approval of vouchers tonight. Hopefully, board members got a chance to look them over in the office and sign off on them. How would you like to move forward?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions about the vouchers tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosegrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that motion carries. We have no treasures report tonight. The next treasures report will be for January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. No committee appointments, no township committee reports. That brings us to unfinished business. We have no new, excuse me, we have no items for introduction or discussion for unfinished business, but we do have quite a bit for items for action. The first, excuse me, the first item is thirteen, large B, small a, Bath Summer Festival with rec chairperson Adam Montre.
Hello, well, Adam Montre, seven five three nine Clark Road, Bath, Michigan. I don't know if I need to do that if it's not public comment or just this. I'd like to also say that you're moving through each of these in less than a minute per item. So Sandra and I are here tonight to follow up a little bit on what we talked about at the last meeting and what she had talked about and the orders had talked about on the two previous, or two meetings ago. So you had all asked for a little bit more information about what we're thinking about in terms of the Bath Summer Festival. And so we wanted to, without going line by line, saying these are the things we are going to do since if it does happen, there will be a committee that would be able to have those conversations and decisions beyond the two or four of us. But we would like to say that we are interested in doing things that are small and manageable to begin with, that we would start with things such that we know people are asking for, like bathtub races, potentially a live music and potentially a beer tent, small vendor get together in the park, child activities or booths, the ever-popular Dunk the Board of Trustee Members booth that we discussed last time, and then partnering with other organizations that have already said that they would be interested in partnering as well, where we wouldn't have to coordinate the actual activities, but coordinate with those entities. So things like a car show. Judy had mentioned last time that Friends of Park Lake would be interested in having something that day, similar to how Sandra has done with trunk or treat in the library. So those types of activities of kind of partnering with other organizations to have them happening at the same time as part of a bigger event. Trustee Phillips was the only one who wasn't here last month, so if you have any questions that weren't included in the minutes or that you didn't see back on the video, I'd be happy to answer those.
I do not, thank you though.
Any other questions for us?
Are you asking us to take action tonight?
That was my question.
I think that we would like you to, and I think that we'd leave it to the board to decide if you would like to take action. There are new trustees that have been elected, although they are not in place until, you know, the new year. So if you would like to take action, we would like you to take action, although we'd also leave it up to you to decide if you think it would be better to wait until other trustees are in place.
There's only one new trustee and they take office on Wednesday.
Of this?
Like Wednesday, Wednesday.
Two days.
So we don't have until the new year. So if you're interested in having this board make, take action tonight, is it? What is the board thinking, feeling? Brenda?
We, we asked for our two thousand twenty-five timeline and funding needed, so you answered the first part of it.
Yeah, so I think timeline is we're looking at the first week of, weekend of August, which has been the traditional time that Bath Days has happened. So that would give us time here, although it is inching closer, that would give us time. Is, we checked other calendars, there's nothing happening that we know of then. There's no football games, we checked that, so.
Yeah, no other festivals or anything in the surrounding communities.
So in, at last time, we did talk about five thousand dollars as a potential ask for a contribution towards these activities. And it's probably also worth saying that, I'm not sure if all of you know, but we also have a rec coordinator that has accepted the position and will be starting November twenty-fifth. So that is also an additional person that is on staff to be able to help coordinate these as well.
Did the Recreation Advisory Committee meet in between our last meeting and now?
No, we're meeting Wednesday. We're meeting Wednesday.
You're meeting Wednesday, okay.
So we talked through it some, and basically we have had the conversation as far as it was going to go at the rec committee to be able to have, share what we have here.
Okay, was that conversation like, we don't want to do anything until the Board of Trustees does something, or?
I think the conversation was, we, here and it has been for multiple meetings of like, we want to do this.
I just didn't want to make, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like, we're saying, okay, if we do this, now you guys have to do this.
No, I think we have been saying like, we would like to do this.
That's the consensus of the committee, the rec committee, okay.
Yeah, sure.
So is it, your wish would be that we would commit five thousand dollars to get this rolling, is that?
So I think the ask for tonight would not have to include any funds in it. I think we're asking of, is the Board of Trustees supportive of the idea that this would be housed at the township level as opposed to an individual external entity or organization? So I don't think that, that, you know, the financial decision. I would say I don't think a financial decision should be made tonight. You know, we don't have everything laid out. We don't have a budget. I think we're discussing the idea of how to, how to structure this going forward.
When we talked about the funds being held by the township, so we don't end up with, George took off with it and we lose it. I, I would like to make a motion that we do stand behind this idea.
I don't.
Going forward, okay?
I don't stand behind it because I think it needs to stay out of the township's hands. Because I ran Bath Days for so many years, I don't think the township has the staff, the volunteers that are willing to put it up. And she's saying, you know, five thousand dollars, that's not a lot of money. You've got to pay for the insurances, you have to pay for fireworks if you do them, you have to pay for, you're talking tub races, you have to have the insurance for the tub races. I just don't think it's feasible for the township to do this, especially since we're cutting our budget.
I don't know that I hear.
Could we just, before we continue, could you clarify what your motion is? I just want to make sure we're speaking to what your motion is, is. I think I know what your intent is.
Yeah, not, not that we provide the labor or even a specific amount of money at this point, but that we stand behind it as.
Like the fiscal sponsor?
Yeah, fiscal, but each phase that we go through, no, I'm sorry, that's too much money, we're not going to do it. We're not asking for volunteers from the township itself, I understand, so.
Well, are they?
That's.
Because it's a recreation advisory board that's coming to you, asking for this.
It sounds like your motion is that we would be the fiscal sponsor. Is that fair?
Yeah, depending on how much that is. It's not saying we're unlimited amount of funding.
No, and that wouldn't necessarily obligate any funding, just that we would be their sponsor at this point.
Right, we would be the sponsor, stand behind it.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I want to make sure folks are reacting to what you're offering.
Clarify, try, yes, that we're not offering X hours of help or X amount of money, but that we do stand behind the idea and that we would be supportive of it.
No, the township's always been supportive of Bath Days Festival individually as a five oh one C three.
Fiscally.
So we've got a motion on the floor. Let me just ask, is there a second to that motion?
Let me clarify the motion, that we're just supporting the idea of a Bath Days Festival?
I think that's where we are at this point, and that, does that make sense?
That is not what I understood. I understood you were saying we would be the fiscal sponsor of the whatever, new, new Bath Days, like new Coke.
Physical money would be held in our hands.
Not physical, fiscal.
Fiscal, yes, not physical.
So we're the money people?
Yes, that we're, if there's money donated, for instance, or whatever it comes to Bath, don't you?
We hold the money, we bring the money in, we take on the liability for the money.
We make the decisions of how much. Yeah, and we make the decisions of whether we accept what's going on.
Fiscal.
Okay, sponsor.
Yes.
Okay. Fiscal.
Emotional, physical, and fiscal.
All of the above.
All right, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, 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 I get it.
So that is the motion. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it, so then we can talk about it.
Great, great. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Kate?
Kate's like, yeah. I was just saying that I like the idea of that because I believe it comes with transparency for donors and for the community. Let's say that there's a business that's like, hey, I, I loved Bath Days as a kid, and now I have this successful business and I want to see this back off the ground, I'm going to put out five thousand dollars. So if that donor, who do they write a check to? Do they write it to Bath Days? That doesn't exist. It doesn't exist in a way that these people have any access to at this point in time. That puts the, the burden on them to have to make a new five oh one C three just to be able to take donations and have record of it versus the township already sort of has that infrastructure in place and the rules that have to be followed for donations and for writing a check for fireworks or blah, 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 that has to, you know, there's rules, I guess I want to say, and structure there already that I think lends transparency that would, that a donor would be comfortable with. I don't know that I would just be comfortable as a donor writing a big check to Adam.
Right.
Whomever, well, yeah.
Right.
Exactly, that's my point, is it takes some of that uncertainty and lack of accountability away. I don't think that means the township necessarily is committing money nor committing time other than probably some accounting time. There would certainly be that. Don't disagree with that, but I don't know. What do you guys think? In terms of what are the potential pitfalls?
I can certainly respect the idea of ensuring a safe place to house the money for all of the reasons we've heard Mr. Chair describe several times. My only hesitation is that there is a limit to a public entity lending its full faith and credit on behalf of other entities, meaning we aren't supposed to be the ones that vouch for particular activities, persons, corporations, et cetera. So to the extent that we are holding funds, I think it will be really important to be clear in messaging, marketing, et cetera, that this is, this is an activity being undertaken by others, the township's being used as almost a deposit source, and also to have a plan in place as to what happens if the, the event doesn't come to pass. How are we tracking those funds and ensuring they get returned to the right persons? That is the limit of my concern at this point. I think it's a practical question. I will not pass on, of course, the policy decision.
I would not like to donate money to you and say, here's for Bath Days, but if it's, if we control what we do, it's a, the community would like it. I've heard it from everybody that the community wants it. Somebody who's been in charge of it doesn't want it. But hopefully, we can spread it around and spread the work around. But it's something wanted here and it was a great public positive thing to do if we can manage it.
I think it's important to say, so based on what was just discussed by legal counsel, that we are not asking to be a separate entity, that the township is asking as, to be our fiscal sponsor. Like, that's not what, I just want to make sure that that's what, that's clear. That is not, we are not asking to have this, like, the rec committee is part of the township, right? The Recreation Department is part of the township. We aren't asking to be a separate entity that then the township is asking as, only as the fiscal officer or fiscal agent for.
You're asking that the township take on new Bath Days?
Yes.
So that's more than what we were just talking about?
Yeah, I think, so I just wanted to listen to be clear, right? It's not, we are not a separate entity, right? We are, I'm here as, I'm not here as Adam Montre citizen, right? I'm here as Adam Montre Recreation Committee Chair.
So.
So I think that's a clear, before discussion goes further, I think that those are two different things and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
That's a helpful clarification.
If the board decides no, then what would, is that the end of the discussion? And there would be no Bath Days by your group organizing it for twenty twenty-five?
I think that that is a fair statement.
Okay.
The rec committee certainly could not take it if we all voted no. That would be real bad. But an external group could, but it sounds like there's no intent for an external group if the township does not take it on. Is that fair to say? I'm asking intent.
Always an option that someone decided to do something, although nothing has happened in the last X number of years, so there's always the possibility that someone would, but.
Yeah?
We had this discussion with Steve a while ago about putting money in the safe that is not Bath Township money. This would not be Bath Township money.
What they're asking for is it would be Bath Township money.
They want us to set up a separate account and everything.
I don't think we can. At least Steve had always said we couldn't.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I had always been told, but last time Lizzie said that that maybe was a misunderstanding of ours. Can you repeat what you told us before?
Last time?
Well, I got a question though, before Lizzie. Is it because, I know at the senior center, they take funds to like do certain things over there, but they're individual groups that are doing that. They wanted us to hold their funds just in an envelope in the vault, and we're like, no, you, it's not part of the township. That's an event you are planning. We're not going to keep those. You need to keep them. And I think, is that where you're coming from?
Isn't this the same way?
No, they want us to be the fiscal person, where we open an account, we would take the money, put a donation. We'd actually take the money to the bank under the township's name.
So that is similar to how the farmer's market has functioned for more than fifteen years. That account was created.
Functioned program of.
Those funds paid staff time, those funds took vendor fees in. When there were fundraising events at Peacock Farm, those came back into the township, into that account that was then, you know, delineated within that, yeah, so it's been happening.
And just like the senior center is separate.
You, being the treasurer, you think it's okay?
No, because I'm not for this event.
So I think that's a very different question.
I mean, yeah, you can do it.
Are you for the event or are you for the functioning legal processes of taking an account?
No, we can do it. I mean, we do it currently.
It is able to be done. Jen does not wish it to be done. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Lizzie, do you have anything to add to the context of this?
The treasurer did a nice job in pointing that because it comes back down to, and thank you for the reminders, that when we were talking about this last time, it was clear to me that it was coming from the, the committee of the township asking you to do this as the township through the committee, tasking them and anybody else who might be involved. I understand the ask has been limited to dollars support at this time. There's no specific ask to particular individuals or staffing, et cetera, that the committee is still working through those details. So that's all still appropriate and consistent. That could be done today. Somebody could come in here today and say, hey, I know the township's working on recs and I, here's a hundred dollars for a swing set or something. So they could do that today. We would track it, would deposit it into the appropriate account, and there it would be.
Thank you.
What account do we put it in? You had to make up a count?
We would have to make a line item for, specifically for a festival.
In the rec budget?
No, most likely it would be a, a separate fund that lives outside of the general fund so that money can be retained and spent year after year on that. So it would, it would be like the senior center or the farmer's market. It would have its own fund, it would have revenues, and it would have expenditures.
Okay.
So it'd be more line items in your budget.
At the end of the budget.
Wouldn't it need to be a department of the township?
Not necessarily a department, it would be a, a fund.
Okay, just a fund.
Yeah, a fund. I mean, some of that's confusing because the farmer's market is a fund and it's the name of the thing we do. So it's, it's a little confusing, but I, it, no, it doesn't need to be a department. It would just have its own fiscal fund in our budget.
It'd be like the police training fund.
Correct.
Are you against this because you did it before on your own?
No, I think it's.
So you feel that's how it should be done going forward, or do you just think we just shouldn't have Bath Days at all?
No, I think Bath Days should come back, but I think it should be a five oh one C three. I think they should do it how it was set up back in the seventies. That's how we ran it for nine years, when we took it back and brought it back.
I just, my feeling is that that system hasn't worked well, though. I mean, look at last year's Bath Days as evidence.
Well, part of it is because, well, that's because you don't have people in the community that are willing to step up and do this work, because I can tell you that last year I was president, I did almost everything.
But we do have these people who are willing to do it.
But they've also made comments, they want to just step away when they want to step away. That was what she said the first meeting we had, when her and Ms. Orda said that.
We want to step away when we want to step away. We're saying the system that is currently in place allows people to step away when they want to step away.
And take the money. No, the money is in an account under Bath Days.
The housing it at an entity that is consistent and long-term and is not dependent upon individuals sets up a system that has more potential to, for longer sustainability and resilience.
What could help move us to a decision? Is it more information? Is it more time? Or do we feel like we're ready to take action on Sheri's motion? Jack?
I have a question. Adam, could you just please, for me or for us, redefine what role you expect from the township, from soup to nuts? If it's a cigar box where you can put the twenty-dollar bills, that's one thing. If it's something else, what's it, what is it?
So I think the ask right now is that we create a sys, a structure for an event that happens in the summer in Bath, whatever it ends up being called, that we create a system that is not the current system and that is more in line with other festivals and activities that happen in the greater mid-Michigan area that have shown long-term sustainability of where they are housed.
And could you, for us, define the we?
So the rec committee, rec advisory committee is asking the township to create an, to have a Bath Summer Festival be considered under a township activity.
That's managed by the Recreation Committee?
That's, that's what I was trying to get with it, so, okay. The responsibility though is the Recreation Committee, not any front office staff, not blah, 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 just, okay?
And I think it would be similar to how the farmer's market was in a way of like, did we, when we started the farmer's market and even on a daily basis, did we, or a weekly basis, did, were there things that the farmer's market manager needed from the township? Were there questions they needed to ask? Were there forms that when we completed, when the farmer's market board at that time completed them and needed Karen's signature, right? The chair didn't sign for, say, the liquor license that allowed us to have that at the township, but Kathy Wood filled that form out, made sure it was all correct, made sure it was PM, not AM, for, for, when we were having the liquor, the liquor at the event and, you know, brought it to Karen for review and signing, or to Dan, or to whomever that was at that, you know, at that time.
But to be clear, Jack, I don't think that we could say that no time of the front office staff would ever be taken up by this. They would take checks, for instance, because the rec committee should not be doing that. Maybe there'd be forms available. It might not be a lot of time, but.
Yeah, just qualify it that it's not, the majority of it's going to be placed upon staff.
Normal administrative activity happening up here.
So I feel like Sheri's motion might need to be amended then, because it sounds like it's evolved a little bit from what was originally, at least in my understanding, maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, functionally, it sounds like we're launching a program.
Well, should we do that without our new rec person here?
Because now the new rec person does the farmer's market, senior center, and the rec committee for the rec programs.
Yeah, I mean.
And this sounds like we're going to be adding to his.
I don't know that he would know what he could do for a while.
Correct.
I agree.
Sheri, do you want to reframe that, rephrase it, rescind it, restructure it?
Restructure. I would like us to be involved. I would like to get it rolling again. If we can form this idea in a way that allows us to say yes or no as everything comes along and is asked of us, that we can proceed with this program idea, monitoring it, changing it, accepting or rejecting things as they come along, leaving that open to us going forward.
My concern with that is I don't think we should be the board of programs. Because then, if we're doing it for this program, should we do that for every program? And I don't think any of us want to, you know, approve the purchase of the new T-ball baseball bats or things like that. I hear what you're saying about funding, but like, personally, I don't want them to come back and say, it's, you know, bathtub racing and we vote yes or no, and it's beer time, we vote yes or no.
I don't think so either. But the general idea was, as I understand it, part of the problem was is the money was held by another group. It wasn't the township, so we lost it. We don't know how much even was in there, I gather. I don't know.
Well, it wasn't our money to begin with, so we never lost it.
Right. But like, if I want to donate $1,000 to Bathtub Races Days, I want the township to have control over that, not his private organization. And I think we have a lot of township people that would donate, that want this going again.
We always have.
I think what we lost was the infrastructure to hold the program up. Is that fair?
Well, COVID killed it, didn't it, sort of in one, one big?
That, and there's nobody that wants to be on the board of bath days. Even the president and the vice president currently that hold the positions, they're in the process of getting rid of the 501(c)(3) because nobody wants to take it over. Because there, you need five to six people to be put on a board to be willing to run the program. So which five or six people of this township are going to run that? The recreation department? Are you now putting it?
Three people external to the rec committee, as well as six people on the rec committee as well, so.
You have, you have those volunteers already?
Already.
Right, so that's what we are hearing here, is we have volunteers at this time, this year, to try it, try it out?
I also think you're not going to be a program, right? You don't all decide what, like, someone puts a vendor application in for the farmer's market. They don't bring it to you and say, can this vendor be this vendor? They schedule a cooking demo. They don't bring that to the board of trustees and say, can we schedule a cooking demo with, you know, kitchen ABC?
Right, it's going to go to our new recreation coordinator.
No, the, the township will be, or the recreation advisory committee will be part of planning those alongside with that person as well.
Yeah, that was what I was trying to delineate in what Sheri was saying. I think Sheri, what I think you were saying is that if they needed $20,000 suddenly, that would come to the board, but not necessarily every form and every program.
Right, correct.
Okay, I, we're on the same page, though.
Yeah.
Al?
You guys, being you were a separate identity, you had to cover your own insurance. Now, if it's through these guys.
It's through the township. We will have to have a rider or whatever.
We'll have to have a rider on our policy. And most will cover it. You wouldn't have to, like Judy's summer solstice, we, we cover their insurance.
Correct, because it doesn't add any cost to our current. We would, but I can't guarantee you that it wouldn't come at additional cost. Because bathtub races, or vendors, or fireworks would, would probably have an expense associated with that rider on our policy.
Alcohol.
Alcohol, correct.
We talked about leaving off fireworks, though, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Would the township expect that to be fundraised to cover that difference? Just because it's in the township doesn't mean it's automatically, has to be signed off on.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
I would assume that that would be part of the budgeting process on the rec advisory committee's end of saying, like, hey, what are the insurance options for X, Y, and Z events? And then that would go into the budget, which would then be, how do we generate revenue to be able to cover those costs?
So have you talked about having, like, certain sponsorship levels? So you have, like, an idea of who you can go to, so you know what you're going to be able to bring in? Are you going to pay for the programs to be paid out of the funds you're collecting? I mean, where are we going to be taking the funds out of, you know, whatever we fiscally say we want to donate? I mean, I guess I'm, I'm wondering how you're going to run getting sponsorships, ads, you know, I guess.
Can, should we let him answer before?
Yes.
Okay.
We do have a list of fundraiser ideas, as well a list of past sponsors in and out of the community, just based off of lists that I have found digging through Facebook and different advertisements. So we do have a list generated already, so we can reach out. Obviously, we haven't wanted to reach out yet because we don't know if this is even going to happen. But we do have a pretty long list of different fundraiser ideas and sponsor.
And an understanding that the township, when, if this does become a program of the township or a part of the township, that there is this process by, to solicit donations, that we are not just going out to whomever, wherever, whenever, that there's a coordinated effort, so that if the senior center asks someone that, two days later, the, this festival doesn't go and ask someone, that kind of thing, so.
Jack?
I was going to say, Adam, I think the only risk you're talking about is if you can't put it together through the recreation advisory committee, that it's just not going to happen that year. Is that pretty much the amount of risk that you see in this?
I would say that seems a reasonable amount of risk, that, yeah, that.
We might have donations added to a pot that's listed for the next year.
To the next year.
Yeah.
But you do envision at some point asking the township to put in some amount of money?
I would say that that seems like a small reasonable, that it would be a small reasonable request at some point, although that is, it's a fair statement.
I just want to be sure, should you come back later, we don't say to you, wait a minute, you told us something else here?
Yeah, so.
Sheri, it does seem like maybe your motion needs adjusting unless you'd like to keep it that way. And we can move on with that if you would like to.
I'd like to move on with the approval for them to go ahead and proceed with ideas and not guaranteeing any amount of money, look for sponsorships, set up a fund in the township's name that we keep to be spent on this if it happens this year and they're running it. We're not asking for office help. I would make a motion that we give this a whirl.
Lizzie?
Well, that motion.
Does the term "give it a whirl" hold up in?
A motion.
Could you give us some, maybe, legal language that we could use to get to the spirit of what Sheri and the rest of us are clearly struggling with?
I will also be speaking as I'm thinking it. But I, I do think, of course, the video is very helpful, because that describes very much what the intent of the motion is if it's approved. It sounds to me like what you are being asked to do is to authorize the recreation advisory committee to begin planning and execution of a summer festival for the bath days and that you would be establishing a fund within the township's budget for that purpose.
That sounds right.
I think that's what we were trying to get at.
Well put, Sheri. All right, so you're, changing your motion, motion. Is that okay with a seconder?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have a new motion. Brenda, how do you feel about that?
I'm okay.
Okay. Are there other discussions, concerns, questions before we take action on that new motion? It seems like this should be a roll call vote.
Or a fistfight, whichever makes it work best.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander? No. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes. All right, you got yourself a program.
Thank you for the program and the world.
Please let us know how we can be helpful, but don't ask us to vote on every little thing.
Thank you all, I appreciate the multiple meetings to talk this through and think this through.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Karen, do you need any clarification from us around staffing? Since obviously the staff reports to you.
Yes, the deputy superintendent and I will work through what our new recreation coordinator will need to, you know, get underway with and, and come back if we need any clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are we ready to move on, then, team?
Yep.
All right, that brings us to unfinished business, large B items for action, small B. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number 28.13, purchase, consumption, or possession of alcoholic liquor by underage persons from the police chief. The police chief has joined us today. We have heard from him twice on this subject, and I imagine he's ready to answer questions if we need to hear from him a third time. If we do not need to hear from him, we could move forward with action, should you all see fit.
I'll make a motion to adopt and accept the second reading and adoption ordinance number 28.13 regarding the purchase, consumption, or possession of alcoholic liquor by underage persons.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or other questions? Everyone recalls, this is the update based on new state language that the police department is putting in place for us. All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yep.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. That brings us to unfinished business, items for action, C, resolution on employee contribution to pensions from our superintendent.
Thank you. I would welcome the finance committee or legal counsel to weigh in on this. I wrote the resolution that you have before you this evening. And that resolution would, in effect, pay the ongoing difference of our pension. MERS defined benefit will increase to 26.53% effective January 1st, 2025. The finance committee has been hard at work trying to make the best decisions possible for the township in regards to the pension system and are currently running actuaries through MERS and need a bit more time to effectuate any changes that are being considered here that will come before the board of trustees. So the township would be paying the difference, excuse me, between, the township would continue its 11% match of employee contributions and then would take on the amount over 19.96% up to 26.53% through the first quarter of 2025, which is approximately $50,000 with all the employees in the different departments that are currently in the plan. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or, as I said, allow other members of the finance committee or legal counsel to address your concerns as well.
Mr. Supervisor? I would like to clarify that, because I understand people will take that literally from the superintendent's comments. The finance committee has not been making decisions as, as, I want to make sure that folks are not believing that things are happening behind closed doors. And I know that that's not what the superintendent suggested, nor has MERS been asked specifically to conduct any additional reports at this time. We have narrowed in, we have met with the patrol officers' representation. I have some communication going back and forth with them, but nothing has been specifically ordered. There has been a lot of really good educational opportunities afforded to ensure that the finance committee had a good understanding of what we were going. I have been supporting, along with Rod Taylor from Mayor Castarason, to give them the information that is as necessary to make these sorts of recommendations to you. And the resolution comes before you, after some discussion between myself, the superintendent, and also some members of the finance committee, to ensure that there isn't a feeling that employees are feeling rushed and that they're suddenly going to be taking on something that their families are not prepared to take on, as their current contribution rate is 19.96%. And if left unadjusted, it would jump to 26.5%, which is a 7% change. That is a lot to any family. So, and to give additional clarification, if it's all right, I would say that the finance committee's discussions to this point have included how to and if to separate the non-union staff from the union staff, which will require information from MERS. They have to run an actuarial and that information is provided back. It is not itself a decision to ask for that to be resolved. And then whether and to what extent the township will want ultimately to effectuate change to the non-union as compared to the, to the union staff. Union staff, of course, will be negotiated with them. There's no decision that would be sort of told and that this is all you have. We're going to give them the information that we get as we receive it from MERS. That is my current working understanding, and that's how I intend to proceed.
I appreciate your assistance.
So do I.
Don't always have the right words that I need.
We're all working together. I will say that this is a complicated matter, and we've been talking about this for a long time. It comes up every so often here at this board. In working with other communities, it does not always come to this, to this level where a board is taking action to at least hold the employees harmless for a period of time while these complications are being sorted out. Some communities would simply say, you know, here are the marching orders for your pension negotiations with the union. Here's just what we're going to do with the non-union staff. So as legal counsel, I have appreciated the level of involvement in an attempt to make sure that we're considering all angles here, because retirement and pension benefits are important to everybody, so, for whatever that's worth from a non-legal statement.
Questions from folks? Al?
Is the $50,000 got to be put in the budget? Or is there money in there to cover that with the benefits you've had?
So it's already contained within the budget. I would have, with the return of the health plan rates for next year coming in at actually 5.5%, I would have reduced benefits had it not been for this resolution. So I was able to offset with the monies that were already included for health benefits. And now that money would be strictly used for offsetting this, the planned increase for 2025.
Is that just for three months or the entire year is offset?
No, it's for three, it's offset for three months.
So the savings from the increase in the benefits would have been about $50,000, too?
Correct. Please.
So, employee pension contribution with cap. The township will make up the cost and the difference through March 31st, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And the pension plan design changes that are implemented will not apply to employees whose retirement eligibility goes through December 31st of 2027. So will the township continue to pay the amount of difference all the way through December 31st, 2027, for those employees?
No, but I would request your assistance in answering that.
No, that language, trustee Phillips, is carryover from prior resolutions, which were, as I recall, the board's intent to clarify that for those people who are eligible to retire between now and that date, that the township's board, township board's intent was not to effectuate any of those pension or retirement benefit changes to those folks. So it could certainly be the case. I'm not suggesting that it is, because this board is the decision, not this lady. But it could certainly be the case, for instance, that the township chooses to move non-union staff to a particular type of benefit. Here, you would have made a commitment that if you had non-union staff who were eligible to retire between 12/31/2027, their benefit will stay at whatever it is supposed to be under the terms of that plan, and you would not be applying, for instance, if you moved them to a different benefit, a different defined benefit or a defined contribution, that would not apply to those folks.
Thank you.
Because this does not functionally change the plan.
Correct. This is the township, for a limited period of time, taking on those additional costs that would otherwise be passed on to you or employees, consistent with your plan and option right now.
Does that mean those individuals would have to retire by that date or just be eligible to retire by that date?
You know, it is, the way it has been applied to date has been, it is a message that those individuals who are eligible to retire between now and then should be resting assured. Please, and the finance committee should step on me if I'm incorrectly stating this, but that they could rest assured that any plan changes will not be affected to them. It doesn't matter if they retire in 2030. It doesn't matter if they retire in 2030. The idea is there was a desire to clarify for, there were concerns from folks who were that near retirement about the impact to them. And so this was an effort to clarify that.
And this language was in the first two resolutions as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
At least the last.
It was in the second, right?
I was gonna say, I don't think it was in the very first.
Not the first one.
But it was in the motion. It was in the motion at the board meeting minutes, but it wasn't in the resolution.
Correct.
But in the second one, it was in the resolution.
The second one and then this one.
Okay. So sort of like our intent has been carried through. Great questions. Other questions, concerns? All right, are we ready to vote on this, though?
I'll make a motion. Why do you have it worded, Brenda? To accept the resolution 2024-12, the resolution to cap employees' contribution to the pension through March 31st, 2025.
Roll second up.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions before we move to vote? All right, roll call vote.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes-Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
All right, resolution has passed. We will hear more from the finance committee as we get closer to March. Any other thoughts from finance chair, from staff?
Nope, we have another meeting scheduled in a week, so.
Let's move then to unfinished business items for action, small D, public hearing, 2025 fiscal year budget. Do you want to do an introduction and then we'll move to the?
I would love that, if I could.
To the hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
So a few changes were built into this version that came out for you for the public hearing adoption. As we just spoke, the benefits includes that $50,000 for the difference in the MERS contribution. In addition, in looking at that offset of cost and the 5.5% in healthcare benefits, I left the benefits line items in each department and fund alone. In addition to this board indicated an interest in having chip ceiling included in the budget, that will appear in the DPW budget. I can give you that page number if you're interested in that. I did add, let me go there, please. Sorry, I should have.
Page 12.
Thank you.
You added 162.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Chip ceiling, five to six miles of roads at $27,000 a mile. I ended up adding the amount indicated of 162,000. The additional monies are there for the Webster Road project, as well as the annual scheduled maintenance on our roads, which includes, you know, brush, mowing the sides of the roads, chloride, and the regular maintenance that occur each year. And the only other change would be in the Parks and Recreation Department. The recreation salary was increased slightly to accommodate the salary that was offered to our candidate that has accepted the job, which I plan to speak about during the superintendent's report, so. Comes with many years of experience, and therefore we offered a higher rate in order to secure him as part of our employees here at the township. Those are the changes, those are the only changes that I made to this version from the one that you saw at your last meeting in October to this version.
Could I ask a few questions then?
Please.
So the benefits piece you're saying is offsetting for three months.
Correct.
But for nine months, it's not.
Correct.
So there should be some enormous savings. It would be like $150,000, right?
So what is happening, though, is, you're correct, the township's contribution is down to 11%. The public, the healthcare, the actual medical healthcare is the only one that saw the savings of a 5.5% increase. I don't have numbers on the other additional policies that cover our employees, which is a plethora of vision. Some child pediatric dental, short-term, long-term, workers' comp, and all the other policies did not realize that savings. It's not to say they won't realize that savings, but those rates don't come to us at the same way that the medical rates come to us.
But healthcare is clearly the most expensive.
Correct.
So there's still probably likely, I mean, thousands of dollars of savings.
So there's always some savings in the fact that we offset, we give, individuals receive $3,000 in WageWorks, which is an HRA, and then families receive $6,000. There's always an assumed savings there, because not everybody uses all their money. An additional is that they have a bank of money they can use for dental and vision to pay for teeth cleanings and glass, eyeglass exam, or eye exams and eyeglasses, and not all of that money is used as well by employees. So each year that, it fluctuates, but I can't guarantee you where it's gonna, where it's gonna be, so.
But that would be separate than the healthcare rate.
Correct.
So you're saying there may be two piles of savings?
Correct.
Healthcare rate and then in the HRA?
Yes.
But the budget does not reflect that?
No, it does not.
Okay. You and I had also talked about hiring consultants for the master plan. Did that get built in here?
No, it did not.
So is it your intent that we would update the budget at that time?
Yes, that would be, I felt it prudent for that to be a separate action.
And then the email that you sent me about the city, village, township.
Yeah, CVT, TRS.
Yes. Said that we have to take half of the growth from last year to this year and put it in an underfunded retirement program if we have one. We clearly have one. So is that built in here as well?
No, it's not.
So that's, my estimate on that was like 12 grand. Does that sound like what you were thinking?
I did not, I have to admit, I did not calculate that.
And do you know that's then on top of what we already put in, the 11%?
Are you familiar with what he's speaking to? Okay. I can't answer your questions, I'm sorry.
Okay. It was in those materials that you sent from like Treasury or somebody?
I'd be happy to work with the superintendent and follow up to ascertain additional information. I'm not personally familiar with that, although other members of our municipal practice room maybe.
I think our accountant should be able to do that, right?
That seems reasonable to me as well.
Adam's here on Thursday, we can ask him.
Who's the cheaper Rick, Karen, the accountants or Lizzie?
Probably the accountants.
Well, thank you for your offer, Lizzie, and give it to the accountants. It's only like, if I have done my math right, and I think I understood what you sent me, it's like 12,000, because the growth from last year to this year was like 26,000, so I guess it would be like 13,000 is half. And then I guess that, my impression was that it just is like a deposit in the underfunded retirement? But it's a rule for everyone getting the CVT, RS money, so I'm sure Maynard must know. Okay. And then previously where we've done chip seal, that money has been built into the road budget, right? Separate, we've sort of like separated it this year, 600,000 plus chip seal.
Correct.
But in the past, it's just been part of the chip seal. Or part of the road budget, I'm sorry.
Correct, that is correct.
Do we?
It came, the price came late this year, so there was a little delay in understanding what that would look like.
Yeah, I've just got a little sticker shock that we just are getting that number. The 600,000, is that's all spoken for? You've got plans for all of it?
Correct, it's Webster Road, and it is the routine maintenance that we do each year.
But not the routine maintenance of chip seal?
Correct.
Okay.
And it possibly could be 27,000 high. It was between five and six miles, so if it's five, obviously it comes at $27,000 less.
Okay. So it feels like there's still some looseness here where we could have some savings.
Correct.
But then there's a few things that we might need to.
And noting that we've already cut approximately 1.6 million.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
Over last year.
Estimate how much. Do you have the number for the fund balance usage? I did not see it in the menu, or the memo.
I don't, because current revenues actually are about 50,000 over expenditures in this, planned expenditures in this budget.
What?
So we're looking at 4.22 million in revenues. The, so that, I think you're referring to the operating transfers out. It's the $746,000?
No.
No, I'm sorry, what?
What is the anticipated use of fund balance for fiscal year '25?
It would be the transfer to public safety as well as, it's the $746,000. It's the transfer for public safety as well as the amount transferred to the senior center.
It can't be, because your expenditures are 5.6 million and your revenue is 4.2 million.
So you, the, I think, are you referring to the statement that's below that total general fund?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. We're not speaking the same language, I'm sorry.
So if we're gonna spend 5.6 million, and we're gonna bring in 4.2 million, that's like a difference of 1.4 million, which is double 746,000. Unless I'm misreading this.
Are you?
This is the memo that is, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
The memo in our, thank you.
There you go.
I'm having a little bit of cold medicine, so I'm just a little slower tonight. In your first budget, you had told us it was about 600,000, so I'm just trying to gut check with the changes that we've made as a board and the finance committee suggested. Did we go up or did we go down? It appears we went up, but that doesn't track with what you're saying, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page before we open it to the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, so the transfer out of. I'm sorry, that's what that number should be. That's, that's what's being transferred.
Rand, are you asking that operating transfers out need to be higher than what's listed in 996?
No, I'm asking how much from our savings are we expending for next year? Or planning to expend?
Maybe is it easier to ask if you have any plans to expand that? Or you're waiting for plans to occur to expand it?
I see what's happening. The amount on the resolution doesn't match, and it is higher, it's 1.4 million. I see what you're saying, but I don't know where the discrepancy is at. The problem is it doesn't take into account the millage, the revenue from the public safety millage that lives within the police and fire fund, the public safety fund.
But it should in operating transfers out. That should be lower due to the increased revenue from the tax. No, because it's in, what she's saying is, she's right, it's in that other account.
It's in the other account. We don't, we don't account for it in the general fund.
Right.
Because it's 2.3.
But it's in our budget.
2.3.
2.2. So if you take the 2.3, add the 4.2, and then subtract the 5.6, is that close?
6.5.
I bet you're gonna be close right there.
I know, that's what I'm like.
I think you're gonna be real close.
I think you're putting numbers together that don't go together.
But she has it in the budget here, doesn't she?
No, because it's in a different fund.
Oh.
Yeah, so the 4.2 million in revenue is in the general fund.
Yeah.
2.3.
Is in the, is the public.
Is the public safety millage. If we'd like to take a break, I could calculate it.
I think we better, because I think if we don't know what we're talking about, we probably shouldn't vote tonight.
5.6.
All right, how much time do you think you want to take?
10 minutes.
All right, let's adjourn for 10 minutes, make sure we've got our numbers straight. Thanks, folks.
Well, all I did was take this, and I, because I added the public safety to see what the difference would be, that's where I was going with it.
The problem is the public safety expenses isn't in there, so.
I know.
It's supposed to be on the other balance sheet, and then that would be.
Transfer.
Plus whatever else we transfer money in, right, like senior center.
Right. So what are our transfer out? Is that, did I add the wrong transfer out? She could have just put the wrong dollar in.
Do you want to page that is?
No, as I'm looking, I'm like, where are our transfer outs?
We could use a little index.
I know. Well, the one I have in my office, I have indexed for each department, so I don't.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. But this is only one, so I have this one now. So it should be for the police and fire, so page 14.
I'm gonna take advantage of this break.
Page 14. So supposedly we only are transferring out 630 to the police and fire.
Yes, that looks right, right? Senior Center is in there.
115.
So that would be the cost.
Of our transfer outs.
Right.
But is the senior center a transfer out? Because that's.
It is, yeah.
But that's part of this, isn't it? Don't we have it?
No, none of these are the funds.
Oh, yeah.
I know, that is confusing, because there's like millions of dollars on the other side in like sewer and stuff that we don't put into this.
Yeah.
But it's not general fund, which is why we do that.
Yeah, this is all general fund, yeah.
Okay, so.
So maybe the transfer out needs to be.
No, I think that's right. I mean, the map adds up.
So this number. Including decreases in the fund balance needed to cover, is it because of the fund balances that we're gonna use for certain things?
It could be, but aren't those all in the funds?
Not in here. I mean, if she's gonna transfer out from the fund, fund balance.
Like farmer's market fund balance use would show up on that page, which is separate from this. Cemetery fund would, too. Building and zoning.
They have their own.
Right?
They have their own fund balance.
Depending on financial statements for your ending December, these funds may require supplement from the general fund. Fund balance, yeah. Well, I don't, they're actually using supplementation from their own fund balances, not from the general fund balance.
But that would, but that would bring down these fees.
None of those, because they're all separate. So I think this is right. I think maybe it's the revenue that must be.
But the revenue was right, because she pulled it in. So we're gonna overspend still?
I mean, we still were planning on overspending. Overspending is probably the wrong word.
Right, just using fund balance.
But using fund balance of like 650 was the original, but 1.4 is like double that. We haven't, we haven't made enough moves in here to.
Cover that, no. Cover that, no.
The income is right off that page.
Mm-hmm.
26860, that's right, 24860, 337400, 244836, 319867, 29554, 193130, that's right, 58280,
Yep, 60. Yeah, we're going through each fund to see if she, like?
Yeah, this one's solid.
That looks right, though. So, yeah, I don't know. Maybe we are gonna take 1 point, what did we say, 1.4?
1.4, that's very different than what we have.
Been thinking. We're still saving 1.6, I mean, it could have been at, it could have been at 3.
There is a 1.67.
From what we spent last year, though, from this year.
I don't think it is.
You don't think so?
Mm-mm. Because honestly, we were saying 1.6 last year, we're saying 1.4 this year, it's 200,000 of savings. Which is very much different. If you add like the?
Yeah.
From our last conversation, there's probably like 100-ish thousand probably of savings there, but it's tall.